Okay, we're gonna bring this meeting to order, six o'clock. January sixth, I believe, is that correct, Beth?
Correct.
All right. Okay, we do call the order?
Uh, no, we have to use the pledge of allegiance.
Okay, pledge of allegiance, please.
Pledge of your vote.
Okay.
Pledge allegiance in the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Please remain standing for a moment. And next, we're gonna have an invocation by Pastor Greg Kirk. Quirk, excuse me.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. Happy New Year to everybody. Would you pray with me? Well, Almighty God, we begin tonight by thanking you for all that we have, and of course, all that you have blessed us with in our city over this last year. And as we start a new year, let us all seek humility and graciousness with our fellow man. I ask for wisdom and discernment for our new mayor as he leads us. I also pray for our council for the same, and that together we seek pathways in the deep traditions of the city that will cause us to grow and to flourish. I also pray blessing upon all who make Gilroy great, our city administrators, our Chamber of Commerce, the Rotary, the Exchange Club, the local churches that meet the needs of the downtrodden, local businesses, our first responders who work tirelessly to keep us safe, and of course, our countless volunteers. So let our efforts in 2025 be honoring, and we pray this in Christ's name, amen.
Thank you, Greg. Okay, moving on to item 1.4, City Clerk's Report on Posting of the Agenda.
Thank you, Mayor. The agenda was posted on Friday, January 3rd at 3:45 PM. If you wish, I'll start the roll call.
Please.
Councilmember Bracco.
Here.
Councilmember Fugazi.
Here.
Councilmember Marks.
Here.
Councilmember Hilton.
Here.
Councilmember Ramirez.
Here.
Councilmember Klein.
Here.
Mayor Bozo.
Here.
Item 1.6, Orders of the Day. There are no orders of the day, correct?
Right.
Item 1.7, Employee Introductions. We have two employee introductions by Leanne and by Sharon, so who would like to go first? Sharon, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers, and members of the community. I'm very happy to introduce our new senior planner, Valerie Negretti. Valerie actually was with the City of Gilroy about 10 years ago as Planner One, and now she's back as our new senior planner. Before returning to Gilroy, she was with the County of Santa Clara, where she worked on large projects and complex projects requiring extensive review. So she's coming back to us with 20 years of experience, and we're really excited that she's gonna help elevate our team. She also lives here in Gilroy, so you might see her in town. Please join me in welcoming Valerie.
Thank you, Sharon, and members of the council. Very excited to be back here with Gilroy and to serve the citizens of our community. Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna pass on the second employee introduction. Moving on to ceremonial items, proclamation and awards. We have none. Item three, Council Correspondence. We have none. And item four, and 4.1, Presentations to Council. So public comment, open floor to public comment.
Yes, we do have two speakers. The first speaker is Delmar Nielsen, to be followed by Terry Hernandez, and you will have three minutes. If you come up to the mic up here, Delmar.
I wanted to come up and speak to you guys, and I want to appreciate, thanks for your time tonight, I appreciate it. I wanted to welcome all the new council members and the mayor. Congratulations on your new spot. I live on the east side of the tracks, and I'm a very concerned citizen, taxpaying citizen, hardworking citizen. We have a problem on Alexander. We have a homeless encampment over there, and it's getting worse and worse as the day goes on. I would like to know what you guys plan on doing about it. It's been a constant problem over the years. I've called about it, asked about it, nothing's been done about it. I'm concerned with the safety of my family. My wife and three kids are afraid to walk down the street to go to the store. It's maddening to me that, my wife can't drive, so she has to walk everywhere. So for her to go out the house, you know, and try to go to the closest place to go get groceries or the store, whatever she needs, she can't walk that way. I have to come home from work and take her somewhere. The other concerns I have are the pop-up fruit stand, you know, flowers stand, food stand on every street corner that I can imagine. It's been going on for years, nothing's been done about it. I woke up on Saturday morning and I had, there's a lady sitting there on the corner with 30 packs of oranges, 100 feet from my house, with a baby wrapped up around her back and sitting on a milk crate. This stuff's gotta stop. There's food vendors that pop up everywhere. They make a mess. I'll go walk downtown and the next day, it's a mess all outside and everything. The alleys on the east side of the tracks, they're not maintained. It's overrun by weeds. I can't even drive my car through the alley. It's a mess. It's been a mess, and nobody wants to clean it up. I go on the west side of the tracks, and all the alleys are really nice and pristine, taken care of, the pavement's patched. All those things are done over there. I'm asking you, I'm really asking, I'm up here because I've never come to one of these. I want to know what you guys are gonna do about this. This is ongoing, the homeless thing over on Alexander. It's out of control. It's like I'm paying taxes and my value of my home keeps going down because I got like a landfill, you know, two blocks away from me. This is ridiculous. I'm here to beg you guys for help. Please help. Please help get rid of this. You know, I go to Morgan Hill, I don't see any of this, okay? I don't see it. Their town, their downtown is thriving. Our downtown is not thriving. Something's gotta change around here, something's gotta give. So please help not only me, but help the whole community. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Terry Hernandez, to be followed by Ron Kirkish.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, and wonderful Gilroy community. Happy New Years to everybody. My name is Terry Hernandez. I'm the president of Pride Social South County. I'm here to announce that we are officially a nonprofit, and I wanted to read our mission. Our mission statement is to create safe spaces, resources, equality, and respect for all of our lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender communities in all of South County. And our vision is for all of South County to be free of discrimination and prejudice. And we are an all volunteer peer group, and we are also pride organizers, and we are also here to bring also nonprofits and health resources to our very underserved South County community. I'm looking forward to working with all of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ron Kirkish, to be followed by our final speaker, Gregory Philios.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and community. I've been told by several people that I need to speak up, so I'll try. Dell was the first gentleman that spoke to you about the RV encampment over at the, by the railroad tracks. I've been watching that for a while. People have brought it to my attention, and it is getting enormous now. It's looking very, very bad. I've seen, and others have seen rodents in there, rats growing in there and running around. They're complaining about needles. It's a bad situation. The area, in my limited research, I found out that the area belongs to the Union Railroad Station, in that the Union Railroad has given permission to the City of Gilroy to clean it up. So what are we waiting for? Are we ready, you know, I mean, is this what we want, 100 yards or less from downtown to have? We need to fix it, I believe, and I think we should do it immediately. Thank you.
Thank you. And our final speaker is Gregory Philios.
Good evening. Just last remember, we had an election, very, very close. Actually, I think our Gilroy community was very fortunate that I thought all of the candidates were qualified, and I thought all the candidates cared. I don't think we could have lost. I think whoever was voted in would do their job. And that is why I want to make sure that we support those, especially the new people that are on here, Councilmember Fugazi, Councilmember Ramirez, Mayor Bozo. I want to make sure that you guys utilize the resources that were already, that have already been set, that have already been contacted, and work with the people that have left. There are projects that have been started. You don't have to start from point zero. There are contacts that have been made, there are connections that have been made, and I would like to see, especially the new people, contact the people, you know, work with people that have already started these projects. Let's continue on with what has already been done. We've got a good start. We're not at the start of the race, we're already in the race. The House has already built a foundation. We can build on that foundation that these other people have started. So that, I just want to say that I'm sure the community will support all of us. Even the people that, you had endorsements from different organizations for the different candidates. I think the endorsements probably could have gone to almost any of them. I think if we could have endorsed more than one, the same person, I'd say, oh yeah, wait a minute, you can't, you can only endorse one. I would have endorsed all of you. So I just hope that you all work together to please utilize what's already been done, okay? And however we can help you, let us know, and so we can support you. Thank you.
Thank you.
No more speakers.
Okay, we will close, public comment. And next, we're gonna move on to reports by councilmembers. So now I will go down the list and ask each councilmember if they have anything to report from the different committees that they're on. Each councilmember's on a committee, whether it's citywide or regional-wide, and they will comment on that. So I'll go first, Councilmember Bracco.
I have nothing to report, just want to wish the community a happy New Year, and my hope for a prosperous New Year. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Fugazi.
Nothing to report.
Thank you. Councilmember Marks.
No report.
Councilmember Hilton.
Thank you. From Silicon Valley Clean Energy, the SVEC Board of Directors approved the agency's participation in the California Public Utilities Commission's hourly flex pricing pilot. The pilot, which was administered by PG&E, will test the ability to shift customer usage with hourly rates. Demand flexibility is one of the ways the state is seeking to address affordability as California expands electrification efforts to meet emission reduction goals. The pilot is designed to encourage the use of electricity during off-peak hours when cost and greenhouse gas emissions from electricity sources tend to be lower. Residential, business, and agricultural customers on specific rates, such as electric vehicle rate, will be eligible to participate in the pilot. Enrollment for some eligible rates on the PG&E website is now open. Outreach and enrollment through third-party automation service providers is expected to commence this month. The pilot is not a new customer rate, but rather a supplemental structure that tracks customers' responsiveness to dynamic rate signal alongside their traditional utility bill. Every month, customers will get a monthly performance report, which shows their performance responding to the dynamic rate signals for that month. Net savings will be credited back to the customer after 12 months on the pilot. The pilot includes customer price protection to ensure that they never pay more than they would have on the standard electric rate. Participating in the pilot offers SVEC the opportunity to learn about the implications and effectiveness of hourly price signals, such as their effectiveness at reducing customer costs and SVEC energy supply costs. In addition, participation in the pilot ensures that SVEC customers offering remain competitive to those of the investor-owned utility. Thank you.
Okay, moving on, Councilmember Ramirez.
Nothing to report, but I would like to say a huge kudos to the Downtown Business Association for another amazing holiday parade. It was fantastic. Thank you.
Councilmember Klein.
No report.
Okay. Okay, we're gonna move on to item number 6.1. This is gonna be interviews for open seats on boards and commissions and committees. Is there a staff presentation, please?
A very quick one. We are here to conduct our annual board and commission interviews. We had 40 applications for the open positions, and council will be appointing commissioners at the next council meeting on January 27th. And that's the end of my report.
Okay, so I'll give a little bit of guidance how this is gonna work. So we will go through the different commissions. So each of you that has applied, when I call the commission that you've applied for, we're gonna ask you to come up and have a seat at this table, and you can pass the mic to each other. And what you'll do is just take a few seconds, you know, 30 seconds or so, to introduce yourself so we can associate a name with your application. And feel free to say something about yourself, you know, perhaps something that's in your application, or maybe something that you did not put in your application. You can go ahead and say that again. This is your time, you know, for these councilmembers who will be voting and selecting the new commissions at the next council meeting, so just, as Beth already said, that will not be happening tonight. And this is also a chance for you to kind of see, you know, sit next to someone who has something in common as you do, and remember as you're speaking and as you kind of enter this next journey of your community involvement. I mean, this is kind of where it starts, there's folks that are up here today that started on commissions sometimes a few years ago, and sometimes many years ago. And I know that, speaking on behalf of all the councilmembers, we're very happy and excited to see that so many people apply for these different commissions. So thank you very much. Few other things. I want you guys to know that after we get through this process, that we do have a very long meeting tonight, and as much as we'd love to have you all here, we totally understand that if you do have places to go, it is okay that you leave this meeting. So don't feel uncomfortable if you have to do that. Okay? So we'll go ahead and start. Beth, maybe we'll just start with the Arts and Culture Commission?
Correct.
Okay.
So if you're on the, if you applied for the Arts and Culture Commission, go ahead and have a seat up here at the front.
Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you.
Yes, it's on.
I'm Steve Taylor. I'm a Navy vet, 13 years in. Been living in Gilroy for about 10 years now, and I work for Mass Mutual as a financial
Hi, I'm Wendy Zamora. I've been a Gilroy resident since 2015. Moved here from New York City, and prior to that, Massachusetts. I retired essentially, but I was a former professional dancer in New York and around the country and world.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Wendy or Steve from council?
I have one. Could both of you please tell us why you would like to be on the Arts and Cultural
Sure. I applied because I have always wanted to give back to the Gilroy community to broaden opportunities for both experiencing art and participating in it. I have a middle school son who's about to head into high school next year, and I look forward to hopefully providing some more opportunities for kids like him to enjoy the arts, to, whether it's music, whether it's fine arts, whether it's digital arts, dance, theater, all of the above.
Yeah, in the few years I've been here, I've seen a lot of growth, I've seen a lot of activity downtown, a lot of things improving, including arts, culture, the library. I've actually applied for several different positions, so you'll be seeing me a few times.
All right, thank you. Any other questions from council? No? Thank you very much for coming, appreciate it. Next, is it, do I have to send the Library Commission?
Correct.
Okay. Next will be the folks who applied for the Library Commission.
Good evening, I'm Cassandra Lowry. I've been in Gilroy a little over a year, and I was very interested in finding information, having a teenager that was in the, was identified as gay. I did a search and found the library had a safe space, and he was able to connect and find his community in Gilroy, and it was a wonderful experience, so I'm very excited to be a part of that. I've been in California three years, I was in Florida before that, and Gilroy has been a welcoming community to me. Valerie, Cassandra Lowry. I go by Cassandra, but you might see Valerie on the.
Right, yeah, it's okay.
Good evening, Mayor Greg Bozo and councilmembers. I'm Victoria Coverston Baxter, and I've been in Gilroy since 1995. I can't believe it, it just keeps going by. And I've had the privilege of serving on the Library Commission as, most recently, the Commissioner Chair. And I'm back here because in the last 18 months, I finally got to really understand the importance of being on a commission. And especially with California having such low literacy rates, with students kindergarten to third grade, in 2023, only 43% of children entering third grade are reading. So I would love to have the opportunity to continue the work that we have started and continue to serve our community.
Okay, so I'll get some, since I'm up here, again, I'll be, I'll go a little bit deeper. I have a very unique kind of blended family. My wife and I have both come out recently, I'm dating men, she has a girlfriend. My two adult daughters live with us in Gilroy, and one of them is trans. So yeah, what you're talking about with the inclusion in this town was, it's been pretty incredible. They are completely openly accepted, we walk around, nobody gives us any kind of hassle, it's just, it's been beautiful. And yeah, if I can contribute to that in any way, I want to.
Any questions from council? I'll ask a question. Is there something in particular, if you were on the Library Commission, that you would do first as a member?
In researching information, I found the Google search first, and then it connected me, I didn't realize it was through the library, so I just make the, it more accessible that it is part of the library, and that information was a little secondary. So I would try to make it more visible when we have, with so many resources that the library does have, to just make it more accessible to the public when they're new to the community and looking for safe places and other resources, exercising so much that the library has.
I would like to work with our commissioners and share information and resources with council on how to get the word out that there is a Library Commission, so that we can have the community come and hear the wonderful presentations that the county librarian gives and our city librarian gives, so that they can see that all these resources are here and they're free for everyone.
I don't want to get too crazy political here, but given what's been going on, what's coming up, I do feel like we owe it to our kids to make sure that certain parts of their education stay as accessible as humanly possible. There's a lot of talk about banning certain things or taking certain things out of curriculum, and libraries could be a safe space to keep those things still, and to have access to that still. And that's something I want us to be able to support.
All right, last answer, any other questions? Thank you very much. Moving along, moving along, the next group will be the Open Government Commission. Please, come on up.
I'll get us started. Hi, everybody. My name is Sharpey Sandhu, and I've been living here in Gilroy for about 15 years now. I live here with my husband and my one son. He just went out to college, he goes to UMD, University of Maryland, so I have time on my hands. This is frankly the first time I've actually come into the city council, so I'm learning a lot, this is all new to me. I'll share with you that I actually work for a company called Okta, it's in the tech space, we have about 6,000 employees, and I'm their SVP of Total Rewards, which is Compensation Benefits and Systems. So I have some expertise, if I can lend that in any way. I applied for the open government positions and also for the personal committee. Thank you so much, and I'll be happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Why don't you pass it to Janet first, and then we'll do that.
Hi, council and mayor, happy new year. I'm Janet Hedley Crewley, and I clicked both Open Government and Planning Commission. If I gave ranking, I would first want to be on Planning Commission, second on Open Government, so I will come up for both, since I did click both. So a little bit about myself, I'm fourth generation, born and raised Gilroyan. I've been involved in the community for, I would just say, since my youth, but 30-plus years. Lots of board, Gilroy Garlic Festival, Leadership Gilroy, Friends of St. Louis, Valley Medical Foundation. And I just really want to get involved more in the inner workings of the city. I've been involved in lots of the outside and the community service region, and I just wanted to get involved a little bit more in the inner workings, so that's why I'm here
My name is Anne Marie McCauley, and I've been here, living in Gilroy for 20 years. I have been attending the council meetings since January of 2023, and I've watched a lot of the other commission meetings to better understand how Gilroy works, including the Open Government Commission. I'm really trying to learn more about government and to be a more informed and active citizen, and I feel like being on a commission would help me do that. I have read multiple times, it's not my first time applying for this commission, the Gilroy City Chapter 17A, which outlines the responsibilities of this commission, line six in particular speaks to me. "The city council enacts this chapter to assure that the people of the city remain in control of the government they have created. I am genuinely moved by the turnout of people applying for commissions today, and I believe it's a direct result of a council who generally wants a collaborative government. Being elected to this commission would allow me to participate in a constructive way that promotes transparency and honors citizen control. I understand the importance of quorum, and am able to commit to attending these meetings, which has sometimes been challenging for this commission. This is an honor and responsibility to participate, and I would respect this position if I am elected to it."
Thank you. Any questions? Yeah.
Anne Marie, so you're also applying to another commission, so do you want to give your preference now, or you want to wait until? your preference now or you want to wait until?
So I, I would prefer this commission, not to interview for the other one, but, oh, sorry, sorry. I'm a little like rough in talking, but a little fluish. But, so I, I watched the personnel commission meetings and she, they were in, there was no applicants at the time. And so I applied for that at the time. Now there's other applicants who I think quite frankly, are probably more qualified for that commission than I am. So I would say that my first choice would be open government commission and I am interested in some of the things that they are working on because I know Diana. So that would be my first choice.
Thank you. Any other questions for the applicants? Thank you. You guys did an excellent job introducing yourselves, so thank you very much. Sorry we don't have questions. Okay, moving on, the next group is Parks and Rec Commission applicants. Come on up. Big group. There's a seat right here as well. Don't be afraid to use that. There's, there's space right here. Are, are you one of the applicants?
Yes.
Yeah, right here Javier, yeah. Steve can pass him the mic, it's okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, thank you everyone for coming up. Steve? Take it away.
Okay, so let's, you wanted preferences earlier. This would probably be my third choice, so library first, art second, this one third. No less important to me, which is, I think I could probably contribute a little more to the other two.
Good evening, mayor, council members, citizens. My name is Michael Vasuzi. I've been a citizen of Gilroy for about 20 plus years. I'm a parent. I'm a, a youth sports advocate. I'm a, I'm an educator, a member of the community. Why I chose to apply to the Parks and Recreation Commission was, you know, three, three priorities I see this commission having, that's quality of life. The parks are, are big for all, all of our quality of life, open space, you know, recreation, youth sports. Youth sports speak to disadvantaged youth and their ability to go on, you know, many times to higher education. And priorities, priorities with the city in this time of scarcity of resources at both the state, the county, the local level. What are our plans as a city with our parks and recreation at this time? So thank you very much.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name is Nathan Ayala. I'm an attorney and I've been living in Gilroy for a little over two years, but based on my family's experience and education, it feels like I've been adopted member of Gilroy for 30 plus years. So I am interested in the Parks and Recreation Department because I am very interested in working on the programs and the, the parks and sports that comprise it. I worked prior, in prior years, as a staff member of the Parks and Recreation Department, working on summer camps and sporting camps. And it would be really an honor to be part of the process in being selected as commissioner.
I'm Bob Miller. I am a retired geology professor from San Jose State University. Lived here 32 years, I guess. And I was previously on the Parks and Rec Commission and enjoyed it. Was worried because I like to travel and go hiking and things like that and did a fair number of trips, so I didn't reapply because I didn't want to miss a whole bunch of meetings. Think that won't happen now. That said, I think the things that were most important to me, I, I've been a runner. I still run and use the parks. Used to play tennis and basketball, et cetera. So I, I think these are all important for, as you brought up, for the quality of life. I feel like I did make some positive contributions supervising, or basically there are two of us, getting the mile markers put on the levy was, I think, a useful contribution. I think the Parks and Rec Commission, when I left, there were issues that are probably problems all around the country from what I've read, like competition to use resources for pickleball or futsal. And I'm sure councils had to deal with some of these, some of these things, nationwide problems. So I'd like to be involved with that. And I also feel pretty strongly, one of the things we got involved with towards the end was city trees, that it's really important to increase the amount of tree cover, particularly in, when you look at the maps of heat islands, even in Gilroy, you see there are certain parts of the city which have less tree cover. And granted, that may not be Parks and Rec per se, but certainly for parks, even if it's just Arbor Day, where we put the trees should be, in my mind, where it would do the most good in terms of these so-called heat islands, even if it's just a miniscule start. Thank you. Oh, and I also, I also said that I think, I said in my application, I'm 73. I think it would be better and I think it's great to choose people who are younger and, and are more involved in the community than us. At least when I was on the commission, there were a lot of gray beards, at least amongst the males. And the, the average demographic was pretty old, or whatever. So anyway, it, it's great to see so many people.
Hello, I'm Emily Miller. Congratulations, Greg, on winning mayor. I work in marketing operations for Levi Strauss and I just moved to Gilroy in August. It's, we, my husband and I bought our first home and I've always been interested in getting involved in government, to be honest, ever since I was obsessed with Star Wars as a child. And then Parks and Rec came out and, so yeah, I've always just been interested in getting involved now that we are planning to stay here for a while and we have a house. Yeah, I thought it'd be a good opportunity. I have been playing a lot of pickleball in the last two years and when I moved to Gilroy, I was kind of sad that there were no courts here and I would have to drive all the way, you know, to Morgan Hill or even further to play. And that's initially what prompted my application to this. But I'm also interested in just getting involved with the community more and everyone here has been super welcoming and amazing. So I'm excited to meet more people and give back.
Hi, my name is Jesse Jimenez. I was, I've been born and raised here in Gilroy and lived here for 52 years. Third generation. I grew up being part of the Parks and Recreation, you know, all my childhood and my youth, all the way from playing soccer on the cream tamarines, literally with Hecropath Pharmacy and just adult softball and so forth. So, you know, I've been really involved with the, the city of Gilroy and the community for many years, especially these past 30 years, doing community outreach, handball tournaments, Easter egg hunts at Christmas Hill Park, through our church. And we continue to do numerous of outreach efforts to improve our parks, to improve our city. And I am applying today because I'm very interested in this role and how, not only myself, but also our volunteers that we have in our congregation, that we can make a difference in our parks today, whether it's reducing graffiti or, or just improving, you know, by picking up litter and volunteering and cleaning up the parks. So very interested in just the sports, the, the parks and so forth. So yeah, my heart is with the city of Gilroy and I, I'm part of the, I take part with Javier, part of the youth task force, the South County Youth Task Force. And also I'm part of the co-op team here in Gilroy. So yeah, I just want to be able to expand my, my, my capacity to be able to really contribute and be part of this city and the, the community here by taking on this role as a part of the commission.
All right, thank you. Any questions from council? I'm sorry.
Sorry about that. I'll stand up. I have the monitor covering me. Good evening, everyone. My name is Javier Martinez. I'm a proud Gilroy resident. I've been living in Gilroy my whole life. I grew up here, so Gilroy is very near and dear to my heart. You know, growing up, I played a lot of sports and, you know, throughout my high school career, wrestling, lacrosse, cross country. You know, I graduated from Gatlin College, then I went and went to school at San Jose State where I got my business degree in business administration with my emphasis in management. Professionally, I work in juvenile crime prevention at the county level. I've been doing that for over eight years or so. And I love it because I get to work in my city. I work South Cap, South County. And the reason why I want to be part of this commission is because growing up, I wasn't always the most fortunate. I wasn't able to enroll in sports due to cost, financial reasons. So parks was all I had growing up. And that just, parks really helped me stay busy, stay active and keep me on the right path. So parks is very, very near and dear to me. To this day, I still use them. I love to play handball, play tennis. I love to ride my bike on the levy, love to go running in the parks. Thank you.
Thanks a lot Javier. Sorry I missed you there.
No worries.
Couldn't see you. Any questions from council? Yeah, go ahead. Councilor Fugazi.
Real quickly, each one of you, what would be your number one pet project coming into the commission? That would just be your thing.
I'll go ahead and start it since I ended with it. The number one project I would like to focus on is just park safety and getting our graffiti under control at the moment and just making parks a safe and welcoming environment for everyone, for all youth and their families.
Number one thing is probably just park improvement, making sure, you know, adopting a park, adopting a park or two to go out there with volunteers to make sure it's cleaned up every month or every other week or whatever the case may cause or inquire. Also, number one thing is, is supporting all the different recreational programs that we currently have and volunteering my time in our community, whether it's the senior center or the Parks and Recreation Department with helping youth or even adult programs.
I would really like to see pickleball courts in Gilroy, but I'm also interested in just learning about the process of how government works. And I don't, you know, I was like watching some of the meetings and it seems like there's agenda items and it's more, I don't know how pet projects really work, honestly. It seems like it's more larger than that. So just learning how it all works and giving back to the community. I enjoy using all the parks as well, not just for pickleball, but I love the walking trails here, really great bike paths. So yeah, I would, I would enjoy seeing pickleball courts, but I want to give back to the community at large and, you know, advocate for everyone, not just my own interests.
Yeah, I think partly with the parks, it's increasing two things, increasing access to people throughout the community as, as much as possible. And secondly, I think when the parks, when the city had a recreation survey that went out, like what was number one, the number one thing that the citizens of the community wanted, some of you may remember this, some Indiana firm spent, city spent a lot of money on to do that. And the number one thing was trails. And I think trying to really keep pushing trails, whether it falls under Parks and Rec, which some of it wouldn't, but in terms of trails within, whether it's Christmas Hill or the addition and the new parks that we're getting.
I would say I have two main priorities. One of them is parks maintenance. I think as, sorry, you've mentioned one. And the first one would be parks maintenance. I think that's the main one for me. Having two daughters who frequent parks and the playgrounds on them, I, it's the interest of mine to make sure that they're all in good repair and, and useful for the kids to play on. To add a one B to it, if I may, is the programs, the youth sports programs in particular. Having two daughters, again, you know, they're going to be utilizing those programs. I think it's important to have not just vibrant working programs for them, but also looking at it from the standpoint of programs for people of all ages to thrive in.
Thank you for the question. I'm going to say it's a three-pronged question to me, right? So the first is, I'm going to listen, learn and ask questions first. Before I can make a decision one way or another or guide, I need to learn and process and understand first. Secondly, to echo my fellow participant down there, I believe in safety and prosperity. Safety brings prosperity. So safety of the parks. And third, it's, it's youth sports and prioritizing youth and making parks accessible for all of us to enhance our quality of life here in Gilroy. Thank you.
For one thing, my dogs are a huge fan of Christmas Hill Park and I don't always feel safe sometimes going there. Some of the people who are there, I don't know, you get like a bad vibe sometimes. So park safety is very important to me. I know there's probably some changes coming up for Christmas Hill Park and I'd like to be a part of that and it can get, you know, even better. I love that place, so.
Thank you. Any further questions for the commission applicants? Okay, thank you very much. Thanks a lot. The next group is the Personnel Commission applicants. Please.
Hi. Okay, I'll go first. So my name is Linda Allen. I've lived in Gilroy for a year. I'm a retiree from Sematell Community College District for over 20 years. While working in education, I served as the second vice president for CSEA, Chapter 33, and I served as first VP for CSEA. Currently, I am a crisis counselor with Foster City PD and Sematell PD. The reason I'm interested in this committee is because of my background, working with unions, understanding contracts, understanding negotiations, understanding, just basic, I made some notes for myself, always have notes, understanding how to review job descriptions and making sure they are appropriate, working with HR in writing job descriptions, ensuring that when we say as needed, it doesn't mean the kitchen sink. I've worked with disciplinary matters, recommended new positions, understanding policies and procedures, but most importantly, confidentiality.
Anne Marie McCauley. So I applied for this commission on the final day for applications after watching the November Personnel Commission meeting. They had a vacant seat and one of the commissioners was serving pastor term to make quorum. At the time, no one had applied for the seats. I decided to watch all the 2024 meetings to better understand the position and what it would entail. I learned how hard Leann McPhillips' job is and how lucky we are to have someone with the ability to fill the gaps in a never-ending wave of staff challenges. I also learned that government staffing is very different from the private sector and even more different than the freedoms I have as a private business owner. I applied with the confidence that I could learn what is needed to be a valuable member of this commission, but more importantly, to help make quorum in an important commission with no applicants. It is now apparent that three other applicants have applied that are specifically qualified. I would totally vote for you. It would appear that I'm not the best fit at this time unless the council has information that proves otherwise. It would appear that I'm not the best fit at this time unless the council has information that proves otherwise. In any case, I'll add the Personnel Commission meeting to my watch list to better understand government staffing and be a more qualified applicant if a seat becomes available in the future.
Sharpie sent you. You've heard a little bit from me already. If there was one other experience I'll point out, I've been the head of HR for Good Bill Industries, so I've had some nonprofit experience in the past. And I'll say, you know, it'd be great if I'm selected for this position, if you find the other candidates more qualified, completely fine with that. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any questions from council? All right, thank you. Next on the list, Beth is physically challenged Board of Appeals?
We have one applicant.
Okay. Is Marco Machado here? Okay, so we're going to move on to the Planning Commission applicants. Planning Commission applicants, come on up, please. Go ahead.
Good, good evening, city council members and Mr. Mayor. My name is Blanca McMurray, and I've been part of this community in Gilroy with my husband, and we have raised two beautiful boys here in Gilroy for 25 years. My husband has a business here in Gilroy. You guys, some of you might be familiar with it. It's called the South Valley Oral and Facial Surgery Office here in, in Gilroy. And in the past, my husband and I have done many dental clinics here in California and even outside the United States, where we do free clinics for just children in need. And my husband usually is the one that does a lot of the work, and I'm usually the support group. Now, over the years, we've been doing a lot of these clinics together, and he's, does all the dental work, and then I do all the support by helping. Now, since COVID, that has changed, and we haven't been able to travel and do our clinics like we used to. And he is always just very busy with his office, but now I find myself with free time. And what better place than Gilroy to use that time and volunteer in any way possible? I don't have experience in government or even city planning, but I see the improvements that the city has made so far in Gilroy, especially downtown. When I drive by there, you can feel the excitement. It looks amazing, and I'm excited to be part of that, I hope. I think I see great things from Gilroy coming up, and I'd like to be part of that new excite, excitement for here for our community. So like I said, I'm open to learn anything, so if I can be of help in any way, I'm your girl. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi again, back up here again. I know I gave a little bit about my background and kind of personal, but in my everyday life, I am involved in construction, so I know project management, I know planning. I also know the fine line that has to be walked sometimes between what people want and what the state says needs to happen. And I would like to get involved a little bit more so that I can contribute to keeping Gilroy the small-town community and small-town feel that we all love, but knowing that we need to add to infrastructure and we need to add to housing of all types. We can't just keep building, you know, single-family homes. We need structure for the future and maybe some younger children and children like my son, I have a 25 and 30-year-old. I'd like to see them to be able to buy homes here in my community if they chose to. So with that said, I would like to contribute to getting that done and keeping what I see as the needs here for our community and also growing us in a very smart and impactful way so that we can keep having Gilroy a great place to live.
My name is Kay Spencer. I'm a retired corporate CPA. My basic knowledge of the Planning Commission comes from a couple of sources. One, my sister was on the Planning Commission during the approval of the Glen Loma Project, which was more than 10 years ago. I also was on the Library Commission and Chair of the Library Commission, a little bit after that, I think. I've been on a number of different committees and boards where I was Chair of those, those boards. I was actually Chair of the Library Commission. I was Chair for quite a number of years of a credit union in the Central Valley where I lived before I lived in Gilroy in 1994. So, but I'm going to divert a little bit. I have a, basically, since I don't know whether I'll ultimately be chosen, I want to make a couple of suggestions to the council. And one is that I think we really need an office park. One of the things, there's an area where there's been discussion about putting housing in what originally was set up for industrial use. And, you know, there's no schools, there's, yeah, there's Walmart close by, but there's no churches, nothing like that. And I think an office park would be a better fit for that location if that can happen. The second thing, the second recommendation I have is that a committee be established that deals with the homeless situation. The homeless here, obviously, every meeting I've been to, there's been someone that's come to the council addressing issues. You can't really deal with it in this format. Homelessness happens for a number of different reasons. There's no quick fix that's going to, going to fix it for everybody. And I think an advisory committee that's staffed by people who have the specific knowledge to deal with it, you know, somebody from Community Solutions, somebody, you know, the, some, a couple of the homeless people that have addressed the council in previous meetings, a local church, and local law enforcement. You know, I think it would be a good move to do that, maybe set it up for just an annual basis.
Kay, thank you so much. But if you want to be considered for the Planning Commission, yeah, I think, I think you, thank you very much. Complex problem, as you said. Thank you very much.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the council and Mr. Mayor. My name is Patricia Klut Denson. I am a native of Gilroy, born in Wheeler Hospital on Fifth Street, 1954. So that makes me 70. I'm, I'll give you a little background. Many of you already know me. I've presented at council many times for the Parks and Recreation Commission. I was active and in the Parks and Recreation Commission and Planning Commission in the 1980s while I was still in the private sector. I worked at Gilroy Foods and Gentry's at that time in the marketing divisions. I became a Gilroy employee in September of 1990 in the Planning Division, so therefore I could no longer be on the Planning Commission. I worked in the Planning Department, the Community Development Department, and Engineering Department. They changed names back and forth, and now they're Community Development again. I ended up, started as a Planning Secretary, and I ended up as a Management Financial Analyst for the Engineering Division. I retired in August of '09. Being a past Panning Secretary, I was also, also a deputy city clerk, so I kind of did a lot of stuff during my tenure. I worked with Andy and a lot of the folks from Berliner. I've been the, on the Parks and Recreation Commission for the last eight years. I've been the Chair twice. My, my clubs of philanthropy are the Exchange Club in Gilroy, and I was also with the Women's Auxiliary when my ex-husband was on the Fire Department, Fire Department Women's Auxiliary. I also with two other commissioners on the Parks and Recreation Commission. We organized a 501(c)(3) for the foundation, for the Gilroy Parks and Recreation Foundation. It's still in infancy, but we have collected some funds. I also was a participant representing the Parks and Rec Commission for the 2040 General Plan. I know one of the things that is a top priority right now and would be of mine is if I was on the Planning Commission was, would to be working on the zoning ordinance updates. That's something they are in the process of. So I hope I answered your questions for you.
Thank you.
Good evening again, Mr. Mayor, council members. I want to add a little more background for myself. I, as an attorney, have served the community. As a law clerk a few years back, I worked for the Santa Clara County District Attorney's Office in helping to keep the community safe. And in addition to that, I have worked in various volunteer capacities. But the reason why I would like to be selected for the Planning Commission is because I've, I've noticed over the two official years that I've been a resident of Gilroy that a lot of projects have been taking place and a lot has been occurring, and it's really nice to see, but it's also nice to see that the, the town is keeping its small-town feel to it and that good community feeling. I would like to be selected for that reason, to be able to be a part of the decisions that help to shape the future in a way that my daughters can both grow up in a vibrant and thriving community, which I see today. And thank you. Oh, Nathan Ayala.
Hi, council, mayor. My name's Brian Downhower. I do know most of you. I've been a resident here in Gilroy for over 50 years. During my time away from Gilroy was only during military service in the Army and college. So I've been here, I've seen what's been happening. I just want to make a difference in the community. I see that planning as a place to do that. I currently am the Board President for the YMCA. And so giving back to the community has always been something important. I'm also on the board for Rotary. I've been on the board for a lot of different organizations here in the community, always trying to do something that makes a difference, giving back. And right now, I think that, that our cities, I've seen it grow, obviously, for 50 years. You see a lot of change. And I know that, you know, it's a balancing act between what Sacramento has to say, what the federal government regulations have to say, and then what's right for Gilroy, right? And so knowing what's right for your community and doing the right thing for your community is definitely something that's important to me. And I'd be open to any questions you have. So thank you.
Thanks a lot, Brian. Any questions from council? Good.
So thank you. It's great to see so many people applying for this, this commission. I have served on this commission, and so I just want to make sure that you're aware of what you might be getting into if you get selected. It is very time-consuming. Sometimes the packets can be four, five, 600 pages long. And given that they are working on updating the zoning, there are a number of special meetings planned as well to get through that process. And so I guess I just want to ask if, you know, you can just nod your head or whatever, just kind of understand that, you know, this is, this is a huge commitment, so. Yeah, so, yeah, I just want to make sure you're aware of that.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much. The final group is the Youth Commission applicants. So if there are folks here for the Youth Commission applicants, come on up. One. Okay, it's all yours.
Hello? Oh, okay. Hello, my name is Sean Ethan, and hello, my name is Sean Ethan, and I am currently a 10th grader at Dr. T.J. Owen Skoye Early College Academy. And what I want to do on the Gilroy Youth Commission is that I want to be able to help create understanding in our community. As I said in my application, I'm a sophomore, and I have lived here my whole life. And I am a part of the Gilroy Foundation Youth Board and also the Gilroy Library Teen Advisory Board. And in middle school, I've also been part of my student council as vice president and president. So I already know in part how to work with others as well as leadership. But in addition, I have, since freshman year, I have devoted 200 hours towards serving our community through programs like the Gilroy Recreation. So I know how it's like to be a part of and serve our community. And, but what I think is the most important part is where I come from. Since both of my parents, they're immigrants from Southeast Asia, and my mom is from the Philippines. And what I really want to do is to help create understanding for my community. Since, at least for some of the youth that I know in my group, there has been, ever since the pandemic, ever since it ended, I know that there have been some sort of dislike towards my community, even if it's not really present here. And if not here, I know that's been circulating a little bit through the youth, even though it's diminished quite a bit. And what I want to do is I want to be able to help create understanding from that because a lot of what people don't, like, from the dislike, it's usually from misunderstandings and not really knowing from our own position and from who we are. So what I want to be able to do is I want to be able to help create opportunities and events for people, at least the youth in my community, to get to know the AAPI community and to be able to spread understanding through that.
All right, thank you. Any questions? You did a great job explaining yourself very, very well. Good job. Thank you very much.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Okay, we are now moving on to item number seven, the consent calendar. Any, any council members wish to remove any items of the consent calendar? None? Do we have any, any members from the community, from the public who wish to speak?
No, we do not.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Bracco and a second from Councilmember Marks to approve the consent calendar. You'd like to take a roll?
Yes, I will. We, number 7.2 is adopt a resolution to approve the Second Amendment to the Agreement for Maintenance of State Highways in the City of Gilroy. I just wanted to point that out.
Thank you.
Councilmember Bracco?
Yes.
Councilmember Fugazi?
Yes.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Ramirez?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Mayor Bozo?
Yes. Passes 7-0. Okay, now moving on to item number eight, bids and proposals. We have no bids and proposals at this time. Moving on to item number nine, public hearings introduce an ordinance approving the First Amendment to the Development Agreement between the City of Gilroy and Glen Loma Corporation for the Glen Loma Ranch Project to extend the term of the Development Agreement by three years. Do we have any communications for council members? Nope. And staff presentation, please.
Good evening again, mayor, council members, and members of the community. So what we have before you tonight is the Glen Loma Ranch Development Agreement Extension. For background, the Glen Loma Ranch Project is a 359-acre development in Gilroy, Gilroy's western foothill area. The city certified the specific plan EIR- The city certified the specific plan EIR and adopted the specific plan in 2005. The city also approved a deal agreement in 2005. This project has now built out at a lower land use intensity than anticipated under the original EIR and specific plan. Because of the reduced build-out, several traffic-related EIR mitigation measures are not required. Therefore, the city prepared an addendum to the specific plan EIR based on that reduced build-out and the associated mitigation measures. And that's EIR, that's referred to as EIR Addendum Number Two. And at October 7th council meeting several months ago, the council approved EIR Addendum Number Two. And furthermore, given the desire to build a new fire station, the city prepared a fourth operating memorandum to the Development Agreement. An operating memorandum makes refinements to the Development Agreement. And that fourth operating memorandum primarily addresses the obligations regarding the fire station, including conveying the fire station parcel to the city and the developer's funding obligation. So at the same meeting on October 7th, the council also approved that fourth operating memorandum. And since then, staff and the developer have been carrying out the steps outlined in the fourth operating memorandum. On December 9th, just last month, council accepted the grant date for the fire station parcel. There's a provision in the fourth operating memorandum that requires an amendment to the Development Agreement to extend the term of the agreement by three years. So tonight, that's the item we have before you, is to extend the term by three years. On December 5th, at the Planning Commission meeting, the Planning Commission held a public hearing and recommended that the council approve this three-year extension. So tonight, before you is the public hearing for the council to introduce an ordinance approving this First Amendment to the Development Agreement to extend the term of the Development Agreement by three years. And this means extending the term from 20 years to 23 years, extending the expiration date from December 21st, 2025, to December 21st, 2028. And this proposed First Amendment to the Development Agreement just extends the term, and there are no other changes. Therefore, there's no requirement, there's no independent secret review required beyond the addendum number two to the EIR that was already approved by city council as part of the fourth operating memorandum. And the next step, if council introduces the ordinance tonight, the next step is to come back with adoption for you at the next council meeting on January 27. So here's the staff recommendation on your screen, and that's the same language as published in the packet. Thank you.
Thank you. So any questions for Sharon from council members? None? So no questions? Thank you very much. Okay, so we're going to open it up to public comment. Is there any comments?
No public comment.
Okay, thank you very much.
And that is the public hearing required by law, in fact.
Thank you. Thank you. So next, I'm looking for a motion from council? Okay, so I have a motion from Councilmember Klein, and it sounds like a second, from Councilmember Marks? Okay?
If I may, these three motions have to be done separately. So we need a motion first for item number one, which is, relates to the EIR.
Okay, Councilmember Klein, can you make a motion on item number one? Okay, and can I have a second as well? Councilmember Marks? Okay, so we're having a motion and a second for item number one. Should I read that?
Yes.
Okay, determine the First Amendment to the Glen Loma Ranch Development Agreement does not require independent secret review beyond EIR Addendum Number Two, undertaken in connection with the adoption of the fourth operating memorandum. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bracco?
Yes.
Councilmember Fugazi?
Yes.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Ramirez?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Mayor Bozo?
Yes.
Okay, we'll move along to number two. Motion to read the ordinance by title only and waive further reading.
That's it.
So moved.
Okay, so I have a...
Second.
I have a motion and a second. A motion from Councilmember Marks and a second from Councilmember Hilton. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bracco?
Yes.
Councilmember Fugazi?
Yes.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Ramirez?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Mayor Bozo?
Yes.
Okay, now the city clerk should read the ordinance by title. So at this point, she has to read it.
An ordinance of the city council of the City of Gilroy approving the First Amendment to the Development Agreement between the City of Gilroy and Glen Loma Corporation for the Glen Loma Ranch Project to extend the term of the Development Agreement by three years.
Okay, so we're now ready for a third motion to introduce the ordinance.
Okay, I'll read that. Introduce an ordinance of the city council of the City of Gilroy approving the First Amendment of the Development Agreement between the City of Gilroy and Glen Loma Corporation for the Glen Loma Ranch Project to extend the term of the Development Agreement by three years.
Second.
So I have a motion from Councilmember Klein? Is that correct? And a second by Councilmember Ramirez? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bracco?
Yes.
Councilmember Fugazi?
Yes.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Ramirez?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Mayor Bozo?
Yes.
So motion passes, all motions pass 7-0.
Correct.
Thank you very much. Moving on to item number 10, unfinished business. We have no unfinished business. Okay, moving on to item number 11, 11.1, appointment of council members to the Downtown Committee.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, on May 1st, 2023, the city council adopted a resolution establishing a downtown committee. As part of that resolution, the total membership of the committee was set at a maximum of 15 members and shall consist of five council members who are appointed by the city council. Each appointed member may appoint two additional members of their choice from the residential community, business owners, or property owners from downtown Gilroy. As the results of the recent election that was certified in December of 2024, three of the elected members of the committee are no longer serving. And therefore, in order to fulfill the requirements of the resolution adopted, the city council would need to add three, up to three other members. If council decides not to add three, we will return with a language adjustment for the resolution, but at this time, you could appoint. Per the adopting resolution, the committee shall sunset on or before April 30th, 2025. That concludes my report. I'd be happy to answer any questions for you.
Thank you very much. Questions for staff?
So the former council members that served on the ad hoc committee were able to appoint two people. What happens then if we now move to have, you know, one, two, or three more people? What happens to those that were already appointed?
The initial committee, 15, was appointed at the time of it was established. And so now, when there are vacancies, the committee that's already, that meets, does it at that meeting. It doesn't come back to council for appointment of new members, just the new appointment, the appointment of new council members.
So that would be it?
That's correct.
Other questions? Okay, some interested council members that would be like to be on this committee? Councilmember Fugazi?
Okay.
You don't have to. Councilmember Ramirez? Okay, so at this time, that's four members, right? As you said, there's no requirement to have five, right? So is there any discussion about that, the fact that there's four, not five? Okay?
Mr. Mayor, we'll return at the next council meeting, amending the resolution, reducing it to four, but that'll be a consent item that just reflects your actions tonight. It'd be ministerial at that point.
Okay. Question? Yeah?
Based on that, if you're going to bring it back, if there is any other changes that might be desired, does that have to come back to another meeting, or how does that work?
I think it would be possible, if council was to give direction, to amend certain components of the committee, that would have to be a separate agenda item.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, I'm going to open to public comment?
No public speakers.
Okay, we'll close public comment. Any additional questions from council? If not, I'll entertain a motion. And the motion at this point will be the appointment of Councilmember Ramirez and Fugazi, is that correct? Okay, I'll take that motion. I'll take a, okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Klein? And a second from Councilmember Bracco? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bracco?
Yes.
Councilmember Fugazi?
Yes.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Ramirez?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Mayor Bozo?
Yes. Motion passes 7-0. So moving, did I, did I, am I close on 11.1?
Yep.
Excuse me. Okay, moving on to 11.2, Cities' Association of Santa Clara County Membership Renewal Request. Mr. Forbes, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Cities' Association of Santa Clara represents all cities within the county. And as of, in 2022, due to litigation that had been threatened to what's called CSAC and liability exposure, the organization required, was required to make some changes to how they operated. At that time, the litigation was not joined by, or the settlement for the threatened litigation was not joined by the City of Gilroy. Gilroy was the only city that decided not to participate in paying towards that settlement. At the same time, council directed staff not to renew the membership in that organization. And the primary reason was is that, at the time, the council was not comfortable that the issues that had arisen previously could be prevented. Since that time, the CSAC organization has basically re-engineered their governance, and they are now a joint powers authority. And included in that is their desire to address many of the concerns that cities had with their current membership, including who is liable for employee actions and actions of members of the JPA. It gave now, it allowed them now to have insurance through the Special District Risk Management Authority. It gave them greater liability for member agencies, clarification of their tax status, and a long-term fiscal strategy that helped kept their costs down by maximizing collaboration with external partners. It should be known that the JPA is not authorized to hire employees, acquire property, or impose taxes. And the first two were issues that were made very clear, that many cities were not comfortable with, is that the JPA did hire employees and they were proposing to be able to acquire property. They are no longer able to do that. All professional services are provided by independent contracts, who are doing contract work for the JPA. And so with these changes, the CSAC did submit a letter at the end of December requesting that Gilroy consider rejoining the Cities' Association of Santa Clara County. And in doing so, the city would rejoin this group, have the obligation to pay the approximately $14,000 in annual fees, and again, would have a seat at that table. So that concludes my report. I'd be happy to answer any questions for you.
Any questions? Go ahead, Deion.
Jimmy, is there any benefit to belonging to it?
Well, I think there's always a benefit to having a seat at the table. I think at that time, there was a lot of concerns that the risk outweighed the benefits. I think that question is answered by, is it valuable to have Gilroy at the same table as all the other cities? Where each city has one vote, and that's another change I believe they made as well. There's no weighted vote. You know, it does get you at the table. So I would say, yes, I think there is a benefit to being with that group, especially for information purposes and having your interest known.
I think, just looking at, I wasn't on council at that moment when it was considered and the actions were taken, but the fact that we're the only ones on the outside of this and seeing the changes made, that brings us back in line with being a part of that. I think it's important for us to be a part of that, being at the table. Not every commission that we're a part of, really, there's a gain from that, but there's a reason being at the table is the important part. And I just think the look isn't a good look if we're the only ones that's not being at the table when the challenges that we had then have been rectified and put back in place. So it seems agreeable to me to go back and be a part of that.
Yeah, I want to echo that, because it's true. I mean, having a seat at the table is the biggest part that we're missing out on. And, you know, I've watched over this organization the last four years and different members in this council that have served on there, and people come and go from that group too, just like they do with the League of Cities, right? And they usually end up marrying a lot of the same policies and state legislation that they want to see either supported or opposed up to the state. They're putting Santa Clara County City Association on there, not minus Gilroy, or saying, "Don't forget about Gilroy," on their letters, but we get mentioned all the time in their meetings, you know, whether like, "Oh, should we, how much should we charge, you know, Gilroy for our holiday benefit?" You know, they're coming. And typically, these are the mayors that are on here. So obviously, they do rotate. Not every single city is like us, where they elect a mayor for four years. They rotate through. And so these end up being the same people that we all serve with on these regional boards. So we're bumping into them at the, you're going to see them at the League of Cities Conference. Many of the people that are on their executive board also serve an executive role, you know, for League of Cities. And, you know, finally, the beauty of this group too is that, you know, there are some things that I've agreed that they have supported, but there's oftentimes that I've disagreed with it too, but we're not able to show that. We're not able to say, you know, "Hey, this is what's happening in Gilroy." And the last thing I want to drop in there too is that we already, well, two last things, we already play a role in the city selection committee. That's with the mayor, all 15 cities, the mayor is assigned there. So what happens is that in usually January and sometimes in the middle of the year, they'll have a huge meeting where all the mayors will sit down. Well, how embarrassing is it for the following meeting to happen at 7:00 PM at 5:30, but then our mayor did, "Oh, well, sorry, I'm not a part of this next group, I gotta go." And last thing is that they worked really hard to clean up all the items that the City Managers Association and the city attorneys were really, you know, sort of putting resistance on. So I would be supportive of us going back. I don't see a benefit, other than having a seat at the table.
I agree. I think that a lot of the issues that we are dealing with locally are being dealt with regionally, and I think having a seat at the table and looking at how we can address some of these issues regionally rather than independently, I think it's a huge benefit.
For the comments?
From the legal side, from the city, the things that we were concerned about before seem to have been rectified, and do you feel comfortable with that?
Yes, I do. It was worse, actually, than Mr. Forbes was defining, because it wasn't even clear what the form of organization of the Cities' Association was, whether it was a partnership, a company, a joint powers authority. And as a result, the liability of its members for actions like the employment action that you referred to was unclear, which is really a mess. And the city attorneys were all kind of tearing their hair out, but they put their minds together and formed a valid joint powers authority, which is an agreement among different public entities, a formal agreement, and limited its power, so we're comfortable with it.
Any further questions? Okay, I will now open the floor to public comment?
No public speakers.
Okay, a closed public comment? I'll go ahead and entertain a motion for City of Gilroy to rejoin the Cities' Association of Santa Clara County.
So moved.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilmember Klein, excuse me, a motion by Councilmember Hilton, and a second by Councilmember Klein. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bracco?
Yes.
Councilmember Fugazi?
Yes.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Ramirez?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Mayor Bozo?
Yes. Motion passes 7-0. Moving on to 11.3, appointment of a council member to the Gilroy Gardens Lease Ad Hoc Committee. Staff report, please.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, on October 7th, 2024, the city council established an ad hoc committee consisting of three city council members who would assist in negotiating a lease renewal with the Gilroy Gardens family theme park for operating the city-owned park. As a result of the November 2024 election, one of the members of that committee is no longer serving on the council, so at this time, it is requested that council approve of a replacement member. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Any questions for staff? Well, if there are no questions, I'll make a comment. Some of you may know this already, I'm very interested in being on this ad hoc committee. I have a deep interest in what happens at Gilroy Gardens. And I'll leave it at that.
I just have a question.
Sure.
Just so we don't get ourselves into, if you're serving on... Just so we don't get ourselves into, if you're serving on the board, can you also serve on the ad hoc committee?
Yeah, I, I believe I can, but I'll leave that up to the city manager and to the city attorney. I believe that's been discussed up until now, so go ahead.
I think in this context, it's okay.
Okay, if there's other questions? Okay. I'll open the floor to public comment.
No public speakers.
Okay, closed public comment. And I'll entertain a motion?
A motion?
I have a mo, one motion to...
Appoint you.
Appoint Greg Bozo to the...
Ad hoc committee.
Ad hoc committee. Have a second?
Second.
Okay, so I have a motion by Councilmember Klein and a second by Councilmember Fugazi. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bracco?
Yes.
Councilmember Fugazi?
Yes.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Ramirez?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Mayor Bozo?
Yes. Motion passes seven zero. Okay, moving on to item number twelve. This is future council-initiated agenda items. Twelve point one, request for an update on the status of staff's work to complete the housing element programs for 2024. Go ahead, Councilmember Hilton.
Thank you. I'd like to propose that we direct staff to provide an update on the status of what staff needs to complete in regards to the housing element programs, collaboration with community development, ADU pre-designed plans, and inclusionary housing policy that were to be completed by the end of 2024. Completion of these items needs to be included in our April 2025 Annual Progress Report, APR, to State HCD in order to ensure that we don't lose our current housing element state certification and open ourselves up for more builders remedy projects while implementing our goals, policies, and programs that are consistent with the direction of the city's other general plan elements, specifically the land use element, potential hazards element, and environmental justice element. The city must monitor and report on the results of these and other programs through our annual progress report. Government code grants HCD authority to review any action or failure to act by a local government that is determined to be inconsistent with an adopted housing element or housing element law. This includes failure to implement programs, actions, including the housing element. HCD may revoke housing element compliance if the local government's actions do not comply with state law. I detailed out the programs in the fair memo included in tonight's agenda packet. Also, due to the urgency of this fair memo, thank you for allowing me to include that one extra page, and I was supposed to keep in the two. I'm requesting that this item be brought back by March 2025. Thank you to those who reached out to me in support of this. And with that, I'm happy to answer any clarifying questions.
So now I'll open it up for clarifying questions. These questions are going to be for Councilmember Hilton. So just as a reminder, this is not an agenda item, open for discussion. Clarifying questions for Councilmember Hilton, please.
Yeah, I have a question specifically, it seems like something that would be easily asked of staff to get this kind of feedback. I'm new to all this, so forgive me. But it, it just seems like something any one of us could ask them where, what the status is on many of these things that were on there. So how is this any different and why bring it before council?
So I'm trying to create a, basically, an official action. So when I went through this during the housing element process, you know, my office wrote memos, they were public, there were two staff about the housing element, each, each draft that we were doing, right? And in those, I would say, you know, give suggestions on different types of housing law and what's happening in there. And what I found is that staff would often just say, you know, yes, we're on that, yes, we're going to do that. And I would say, are you aware of the timeline that we have going on? Or yes, we're aware of the timeline. And there never really seemed to be any teeth behind it, like, we, we should get this done. And what that ended up doing is, you know, we were late. January 31st, 2023 is when the housing element was supposed to be completed, done, and certified. And we ended up being late by several months. And what I found is that, yeah, we all thought that the stuff was going to happen on time, but now we're in the game. And now we're looking in the rearview mirror. These three items, these programs, have not been completed. If they were completed, then we would see them on our website. I'd be able to choose an ADU pre-plan. So what I am trying to ask...
I do believe the ADU plan is out on the website. I looked at it today, and I do believe a couple of these items are taken care, I just, it just seems to me like it is a, it, it's an effort to, to basically take staff in front of the public when we can't get something handled behind the scenes to ask them questions? Is that what you're alluding to? You couldn't successfully do this before behind the scenes, so now we bring it up, up here to basically make sure they get it done? I'm just, I'm really confused.
Yeah, it's, it's a, it's a make sure to get it done, but it's also a heads up to, to staff and the public that, that we are, we understand that these programs need to be finished, and they should be finished at the end of the quarter, and we're going to be looking for that in April. Staff is fully aware of, of these questions that I've had in the back and forth, so this is not by any means like a, a, new to them. I'll put it that way. But what I am concerned about is that, is that we come around to the April timeline and we either get a response of, hey, we're, we're, we are trying to get that done, yes, we're, we're still trying. But what I want to know today, and I'm hoping that my colleagues would want to know, is that if we can't, we obviously don't want a builder's remedy project in Gilroy. So is there something today that staff needs in order to get these three programs finished and completed by April? Is it a staffing thing? Is it a funding thing? Like, let us know today so we can help you, so then April, when we hear the, when we hear the, the APR and we send that to the state, that we all know that those things got done? Does that make sense?
Other questions?
Yes, I have two things. We also have an inclusionary housing program that's on our site. Is more work being done on it? Because when it's on the site, I'm assuming that it is completed. So see, I'm a little confused over this. Jimmy, are, was staff going to come back and, and say what they've been working on? Or are these completed programs?
Well, I think that we are required by HCD to make an annual report of our progress on all these programs. I believe there are sixty-eight programs that, sixty-five programs that the state's requiring us to do during this housing element period, and we are required to come back to council and report.
So when were they going to come back to report?
March of 2025.
Okay, so then that's already scheduled, correct?
That is correct.
And then Councilmember Hilton, I want you to clarify something, because you said staff was late in getting the, the document turned in. But as I understood it, they turned it in, in October of 2023. It got sent back to us at the end of January 2024, and the accepted document had to be done by the 31st. I'm off by one year? Okay.
October 2022 and January 2023.
Oh, all right. Okay, you're right. Okay, but it had to be, what, approved by January 31st of 2023, correct? Well, I don't feel our staff was late in getting it turned in. When they only had three days to go back and make all the corrections, that wasn't on them. That was on HCD for not reading it quicker when it was turned in, in October of October 2022. So I really don't like staff being blamed in, in saying that they were late in getting anything done when they weren't.
No one's blaming anybody.
Well, the way you said it, you just told the public that they did not turn it in on time.
Everybody, we're getting a little optimistic, but to clarify you that, everybody knows that it was due on that day, and we did not have it completed on that day. Period.
Okay, but I still stand by, it wasn't their fault, when they got it turned back to them end of January, a few days before the 31st.
Okay. But back, back to what Councilmember Fugazi was trying to ask, is why are you, why are you even asking this? In my past experience, when I didn't do this, and I didn't publicly say it, and, and nobody, nobody got around it, we were late. And we got, we were subject to the builder's remedy. So if everybody feels fine, and everybody thinks that we're fine, and this, this doesn't, this would not pertain to anything, like, we're all good, all these things have been done, and they're going to tell us that they're done in April, and staff doesn't need anything, then, then I'm fine, I'll, I'll withdraw it if, if you, if you think that. But my experience from, from going through this process before is that if we didn't speak up early, we were late to the game, and we were, we were subject, and we have two builder's remedy projects in the, in the city, and I don't want to see that happen again, and I'm pretty sure you guys don't either.
So then, when would you want this on the agenda?
I already said that, but I think he wants to say something.
But then Jimmy said March was going to, they were going to report anyway in March. So I, I'm a little confused.
Hold on. So can I go to Kelly?
Yeah, so basically, my question is the same thing. My understanding is that it was submitted in October. I, I, like, when would you have wanted that to have been submitted? If the due date, you know, if the approval date by the state...
I'm not going to, I'm not going to answer that. That's, that's nothing to do with this. We can talk about that.
Well, it does...
Yeah, we're wait, that's, I'm not interpreting.
Do you have a further, further comment?
Again, I...
Clarifying question?
Yeah, if it's not going to come back to a March, and they're going to report back to us in March anyway, what is the difference?
That's what I'm trying to get to, yes.
It's the same timeframe, right?
Well, it's by March, right? But if, if staff needs something today in order to complete those three programs that should have been completed December 31st, 2024, if they need something now, this gives them...
Well, then you're saying that they're derelict in not asking us for those things ahead of time, or they would do that anyway?
That's what I thought two years ago too, man. We're giving them a heads, we're giving them the opportunity, if they, if they, if, if everything is fine and you guys don't agree with this, I'll pull it, and we'll see what happens in April.
Are there other comments or qualifying comments for Councilmember Hilton? Any others? So now, any others at this point? So I can, I'll go to public comment?
We do have one speaker.
Okay.
Ron Kirkish, you'll have three minutes.
I don't think I'm going to need three minutes, I'll go to mayor, council. In my conversations with others, they, they have informed me that this is really something that's not necessary, that it's actually going to be a more, a burden on staff, from what I understand. And so, and it's an unnecessary burden. So in my opinion, I don't think this should be something that you should consider. Thank you.
That's it.
Okay, I will now close public comment. So we have a chance for last comments or questions about this, and let's get an indication if we want to have some action. Thumbs up? Yeah, thumbs up? Sorry, they're doing, yeah, thumbs up or thumbs down? Yeah? Okay, so we're going to, we're going to pass on this?
Yeah.
Yeah, any other comments on it? Okay, thank you very much for bringing that.
So the vote was three...
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, the thumbs up was thumbs down, not to bring this back?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, sorry. Thank you.
Just wanted to make sure the record's clear.
Okay, moving on. Item number thirteen, city administrators' report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to respond to some of the questions made during public comment about the encampment on Ninth and Alexander, and actually kind of give you some of the facts that I think might be a little bit misconstrued. That land is Union Pacific Railroad property, and the city does not have permission to go onto that property and abate those RVs. What you may be, might, what you may be confusing is that over at Gilroy Prep, where the city has a 500-feet ordinance of no encampments within schools, you know, daycare centers, things like that, we do have a letter of permission from Union Pacific to abate that property when we want to. On January 2nd, just a few days ago, Union Pacific started abating that area. We don't know what their plan is. Union Pacific is not exactly a organization that you can call and get somebody on the phone and know when they're coming, or when they're going, or what they're doing. They are a federal, they're a much larger group at the federal level, and so it isn't like we are able to deal with most things. So you would ask, why doesn't the city go on to that property and abate it? I can tell you, there are significant liability issues if we go onto a property that is not ours. But don't think for one minute we don't care about what you're going through. We're trying to fight through some of the, the, the red tape to get people out there to clean it up. We know it's bad, we know it's dangerous, and it's dangerous for us too. I would not want to send our staff out there with all that hazmat, needles, all those things that unfortunately are in your neighborhoods. For that, I'm sorry, but don't think for a second we don't care, and we're not trying. And as soon as I have more information, I will get that out to you. And if you ever want to know what's going on, please reach out to myself or one of your council members. But it's, it's always a complicated situation, especially when it's not our land. So I hope that helps a little bit. Second, I wanted to remind everyone that the city has strategic planning on February 12th for the upcoming two-year budget cycle, next to the budget process. I think this is the most exciting thing we do all year, but I'm probably a little weird in that sense. The community survey is online right now, please participate in that. It's about 10 minutes. It is anonymous, we collect no personal data. It, it'll ask you about your community and priorities, and it's just a piece of information we use during strategic planning, and that will be open till January 31st. Next, you may have noticed fencing around the parking lots here at City Hall. We have embarked on our solar project that will help us offset some of our energy costs and provide us some shade during those hot months, but that project just got kicked off, and that's been in the works for several years. And lastly, I did want to just mention that, I'm sure you're aware that Proposition 36 was signed into law and effective on December 18th. It passed by the voters by 69%, 68%, and it will change how the criminal justice system handles certain thefts and certain drug offenses, specifically repeat offenders. And we will bring a report back to council here in the upcoming months about the impacts that we've seen. But as you know, we, we are, our police department is one piece of that equation. We need support from the district attorney's office and also from the court system itself. So we can't really say it's helped at all yet. There is a good likelihood that it will, but we will report here in the next few months about its impacts on some of our retail theft and other issues. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Jimmy, can you, can you, can you, can you just pay for that? How, where's the money coming from?
Oh, yes, sure. The solar project is funded through PGNE credits on our bill, so we expect our bills to go down. They use that to pay back the capital. It's no out-of-pocket to the city. It's basically like a loan that gets repaid with energy savings, so win-win.
Any other comments or questions for Jimmy? Okay, we're moving on to item number 14, city attorneys' report.
Yeah, in light of the closed sessions, I have no separate report. Normally, what we do at this point is I read the closed session agenda items for item 15. So with the mayor's permission, I'll go ahead and do that?
Yes, please.
Okay. We have five closed sessions. Fifteen point one is conference with legal counsel anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to paragraph two of subdivision D and paragraph three of subdivision E of Government Code Section 54956.9 and Gilroy City Code Section 17A113B. Based upon receipt of written communication from Shankman &amp; Hughes, PC, one case as defendant. Items 15.23, 15.24 and five are actual litigation that is currently pending. They are all brought pursuant to paragraph one of subdivision D of Government Code Section 54956.9 and Gilroy City Code Section 17A113A. Item 15.2 is Gandolphi Investments LLC versus City of Gilroy in the Superior Court, case number 24CV444165, filed July 26, 2024. Item 15.4 is one case Timothy Gavin v. City of Gilroy, Superior Court, case number 24CV428673, filed November, excuse me, filed January 5, 2024. And item 15.5 is case City of Gilroy versus Superior Court for the County of Santa Clara and Law Foundation versus Superior Court for County of Santa Clara. That case is in the Supreme Court, case numbers S282937 and S282950, and review was granted by that court on February 21, 2024. So there are four litigation sections, closed sessions. In addition, item 15.3 is a different one, that's real property pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.8, Gilroy Civil Code, Gilroy City Code, Section 17AA8, Gilroy Gardens Theme Park, 3050 Hecker Pass Highway, the APNs are given on the agenda, negotiators Jimmy Forbes and Victoria Valencia, other parties to negotiations, Gilroy Gardens Family Other parties to negotiations, Gilroy Gardens Family Theme Park LLC, under negotiations, price and terms of payment for sale or lease. Now, under the Brown Act and our code, I now have to advise you with respect to the four litigation sections first, that it would be, it would, it would harm the position of the city to discuss these matters in open session. And therefore, I recommend that the city council go into closed session on those four items with, excuse me, I recommend the city go into closed session on those four items to assert the attorney-client privilege as to those. So now we need to take a vote to go into closed session on those four items.
Out of the...
And I guess, excuse me, Beth, before we do that, let's see if there's any comment on them.
There's no public comment.
No public comment. All right, then it's appropriate to take a vote.
Oh, I did have one. I'm sorry. My mistake.
Come on up.
Let's take the one comment then.
My name is Anne Marie McCauley, and I would like to provide a comment regarding the builder's remedy project 315 Los Anamis. The developer, 10 South, has made it very clear that they will use any means necessary to build their development. The state laws are greatly in their favor, as I'm sure will be disclosed to you in private session. The developer demonstrated their determination with an expensive hit campaign against our previous mayor. While it is no secret that I did not support her, I am disturbed by an outside entity interfering with our local election. The best way to deflect a hit campaign is simply to have a foundation of truth created by the transparency of facts. The council now has an opportunity to present the citizens of Gilroy with information about this development honestly. Don't give developers the opportunity to leverage misinformation and our own weaknesses as a city by blaming other council members, state elects, and laws. Blame is not leadership. These builder remedy projects are creating a big strain on our infrastructure and are not necessarily accommodating the housing demographic that we need. One of the most important functions of our housing coordinator is supplying this information. By hiring a housing coordinator and developing this team, Gilroy is starting to prove to the county, state, and developers that we are not amateurs and are able to comply with mandates and maintain local control simultaneously. To some extent, all of you ran on local control. Please look to the virtues of temperance and wisdom to seek wise counsel from other city leaders, experienced lawyers, our housing development team, and city manager to define what it is you actually can control. And then be honest about it to the citizens so that we can support and defend you if the need arise. Thanks.
Any other public comment?
No others.
Okay, I will close public comment. And now can you take a roll call from council to...
To go into closed session?
Close session.
Councilmember Bracco?
Yes.
Councilmember Fugazi?
Yes.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Ramirez?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Mayor Bozo?
Yes. Motion passes seven zero.
Okay, so what that does is it authorizes us to now go into closed session on the litigation items. Once we get into closed session, the first item in business is a vote to stay in closed session on the other item due to our open government ordinance, which works that way.
Okay, thank you, everybody, for coming tonight. We'll take a five-minute break on council. Thank you.